I will now call the Joint City of Brisbane City Council/Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a city clerk? Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
We have a report out from closed session.
Council met with labor negotiator and provided direction. Council considered workers' comp case and also provided direction to staff.
Okay. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. I understand staff wanted to remove an item.
Mayor, would you like to close in memory of young LaSous?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Mitch Boyer and also Michael Harrigan, longtime Brisbane residents and former Brisbane residents.
I'm sorry, what was the first name?
Joey LaSous.
With that, second.
Oh, wait. Did staff want to remove an item?
We'd like to pull new business item C off of there. We got a late-breaking request from the California Transportation Commission to put some additional language in the resolution, so we just need a little bit of time to smooth that out, and we'll bring it back to your next meeting.
Which one?
It's new business item C, sir. It's approving the plans and specs for the Slurry Seal project that would use the SB1 funds.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. That move adoption has amended?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That brings us to oral communications, number one. Is there a member of the public who wishes to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. That brings us to item A, SFO Airport Development Plan.
Thank you, council members. Doug Yackel, I'm the airport spokesman for SFO. Appreciate the opportunity to brief you this evening on SFO's Airport Development Plan, which is a long-range planning study that will guide potential future construction activity at our airport. So just for an overview, SFO is the busiest airport in the Bay Area. SFO is about 2/3 of all the traffic activity that happens in the Bay Area. Oakland and San Jose split the other 1/3 of activity. SFO is the 7th largest airport in the United States, 23rd largest in the U.S., and last year, SFO accommodated nearly 58 million passengers. And that level of activity, which is a new record for the airport, drives a lot of economic impact. There's about 43,000 people that hold jobs at the airport, which makes SFO the largest job center in San Mateo County, and that generates about $8.4 billion in business revenue. We also estimate that there's about 250 Brisbane residents that actually work at SFO, and those residents earn a labor income of over $16.9 million. So quite a bit of economic activity, including at Brisbane. What this Airport Development Plan is really about is how we get from where we're at today, that 58 million annual passengers, up to the maximum we think our airport can accommodate, which we think is about 71 million passengers. There's four runways at our airport, and those runways, as you know, stick out into the bay, and we have no plans whatsoever on adding runways at SFO. So eventually, those runways will constrain the amount of activity that can happen at SFO, and we think that'll reach a level of about 71 million passengers, and we think we'll get to that point probably in about 10 to 12 years based on market conditions. So what is the Airport Development Plan? This is a long-range planning study. It really guides the future development of construction activity at our airport, and it replaces the 1989 master plan, which created a lot of the projects that you already know of at SFO, including some of the projects that you see along Highway 101 right now that are coming to fruition. Just an example of a couple of the ongoing projects. Number one, you'll see this along Highway 101, the construction of a new on-airport hotel. This is the Grand Hyatt at SFO, 350-room, four-star hotel that will open this July 12th. Also, the redevelopment of Terminal 1, the first section of which will open July 23rd with a nine-gate section, and other phases will open again in 2020 and 2022. And then also another long-term parking garage, which just opened in February and added 3,500 additional long-term parking spaces to our airport parking mix. These, again, examples of projects that were created under the previous airport master plan. So what's in this new Airport Development Plan is really the basis for environmental review. We plan to seek environmental approval for a host of potential construction projects, such that when the need is realized for any of these projects, we've already satisfied the environmental requirements and can go right to financing and phasing these projects for construction. This includes proposed terminal, roadway, and support facilities, but as I mentioned, does not include plans for any type of runway expansion at our airport. The goal of this plan is to continue to modernize our airport, to keep it current as our passenger levels grow up to that maximum amount, and to match terminal parking and support facilities to that existing runway capacity that I talked about. What the ADP won't do, it won't change runway configurations, it won't change flight paths, it won't change the way that aircraft arrive and depart SFO. It won't expand the airport's property footprint, and as I mentioned, it won't increase our runway capacity. There's a host of recommended ADP projects, color-coded in different categories. Light green represents parking, medium green represents support facilities, the red is a new central plant. But really, I'd like to focus on the blue section, which is more passenger-related recommended projects that we might consider doing under this Airport Development Plan. A couple of them include the reconfiguration of our existing international terminal, where we would basically take the main hall, split it down the middle, make the back half of it post-security, such that passengers could go from one side to the other without having to go through the security checkpoint again, and this would give us more flexibility in terms of what airlines could operate where. Another project we would consider is the creation of an additional boarding area or concourse. Our boarding areas today are labeled A through G. This would add a boarding area H in the vicinity of where the BART station is and add about six additional gates to the airport's capacity. And also, we'd look to create a central hub garage. There is currently one at the center of our airport that's about 40 years old. We'd look to take that down, create a new mixed-use, a mix of public parking and ground transportation. For our airport, one of the biggest changes over the last few years is the rise of Uber and Lyft and the amount of roadway congestion that's creating. We've already started moving Uber and Lyft categories into our existing garage for pickup. We would look to expand that and really make the central hub garage the primary place where people would pick up and drop off passengers at our airport to keep the roadways moving more smoothly. The timeline for this, we're essentially in a place right now where we're doing the notice of preparation, public scoping meetings, with the goal of, by later this year, having a draft environmental impact report available, which would kick off a public review period of 45 days, such that by mid-2020, we'd be in a position to have the final environmental impact report ready, make a notice for availability, certify it, and adopt it. And the projects that would be considered under this Airport Development Plan would probably happen between the 2020 and 2035 timeframe, again, triggered when the need arises as we ramp up to that maximum amount of passengers we could serve of 71 million. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
I have a question. You said you're not going to be changing the runways, so there's no runway expansion. How will you manage an extra $13 million flights in and out of SFO per day?
So just to clarify, the number of flights will probably grow to about 1,500, going about 1,250 today. And one of the assumptions that we've made all along is that airlines will continue to use larger aircraft, rather than additional aircraft, to grow their capacity at our airport, and this is something we've been pushing for for many years. A good metric of it is the fact that since 2011, our passenger traffic has grown by about 36%, but the number of flights has grown by 14%. So in other words, it signifies that airlines have gotten the message and they are using larger aircraft before they're adding additional airplanes. We'd expect that to continue. Back in 2011, an average aircraft at SFO held 134 seats. Today, it holds 158. In the assumptions we've made as we ramp up to 71 million, we expect that by the time we reach that maximum, the average aircraft will hold 170 seats, so we see that trend continuing in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a comment. It sounds like there's going to be increased noise, a lot of flyovers and stuff, and I know that the airport gets pounded. I know we have our representatives on the airport roundtable, but I'm sure this isn't the first you'll hear from any city that, you know, are going to have increased flyovers now.
Well, and really, the trend that we've seen since 2015 with the rise of NextGen is kind of, two things headed in opposite directions. Individual aircraft continue to get quieter and quieter. It's a very different issue than it was 40 years ago, and as we measure the contour of noise around our airport, that contour continues to shrink. But what's different is the FAA NextGen took what used to be an eight-lane freeway, a wide swath of air traffic over communities, such that a particular individual may only experience one of those aircraft at any given time, whereas now, NextGen has focused it very tightly into a single lane, and the folks that live under that single lane experience a far greater frequency and intensity of air traffic than they ever did before. I think one of the things that we've talked quite a bit about in the roundtable is the fact that the method for measuring noise is probably out of step with the way people perceive it today. The method by which federal and state agencies require our airport to measure noise goes back 40 years, to time when individual jets really were noisy, whereas now, I think what's needed is a different type of measurement that really captures the frequency and intensity rather than the individual noise that a single aircraft makes.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm saying you live in Brisbane, it's a bowl, and I'm sure you've heard this too, and you get that back blast, and that bounces all over the place, the sound wave, so, you know, to say that, I mean, and I understand, we're not really supposed to be in that lane, but what you're, you know, explaining is that we are in that lane, in a sense of with this NextGen, so I don't think that that's working, you know?
Yeah, and we've-
And I don't think your EIR is, is it really going to study that?
So I guess the one thing that I'd like to make clear about this Airport Development Plan is this plan has essentially no nexus to noise issues. In other words, we could not do any of these projects. We could decide not to do any of them, and that won't have any bearing on the way we ramp up to 71 million passengers, because this is more about parking, it's more about terminals, more about roadway congestion, so that growth will happen as it happens up until that maximum. The EIR will, by the way, capture some things that probably are new. There are new requirements in the EIR for measurements of human health impact, so I think you'll see some things coming out of the EIR that probably are measurements that hadn't been made before, just to say that this project, again, you know, will not impact the way that aircraft fly in and out of SFO.
Thanks for coming tonight. It's a quick turnaround from last night. So on the 25% increase on flights that you're anticipating, is this going to be anticipated to be during the daytime or to get your maximum utilization out of the runways? Are you going to have to have more flights that are in off-peak nighttime quiet hours?
It's difficult to say, and as you know, the airport doesn't have the ability to tell airlines when they can and can't fly. Airlines will look to schedule flights where they think there's a competitive advantage. Typically, that exists more during peak hours during the daytime, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, so I really can't promise or predict where additional flights will end up being added as we ramp up to that maximum level, only to say that the work of the roundtable, the focus on nighttime departures, remains a high priority for us, because if we're looking to net improvement anywhere, the first place we'd like to net it out is in some of those evening hours.
But if you're adding more concourse, more gates, you're certainly adding more capacity to the different airlines, and in that respect, you are asking for more traffic, and you're basically fulfilling that community need or want of more flights and more traffic, and consequently, more noise for communities that are under those freeway lanes.
In reality, we could choose not to do the Boarding Area H project, and it would have no bearing on the way that airlines schedule at SFO. In other words, it would simply be more aircraft that would deplane or enplane remotely at a hard stand on the tarmac as opposed to being connected to a jetway, but it really wouldn't enable or disable the increase in airline activity. That's really going to be driven by economic factors, competitive factors, and then ultimately runway capacity. That's the great limiter at our airport.
Well, if, not to be argumentative, but if the capacity is not there for gates and people are feeling inconvenience, they're going to go to a different airport. So, you know, to, so, okay.
That's a possibility. That is a possibility, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yes. Hi, Doug.
Hey, Cliff.
So kind of piggybacking on the last couple of questions, so you've talked about how to get to that 5.8 million to 7, 58 million to 71 million, you know, there's going to be bigger planes, carry more passengers, I'm sure the NextGen system will be more efficient to allow more planes to take off in a more, I don't know, like, you get more planes out per hour, I guess? No? Okay. I thought that's what the NextGen system was in regards to efficiency of the-
One of the FAA's objective in the NextGen is more efficiency going between airports. In other words, a more efficient movement of traffic across the United States between airports, but NextGen really won't help the arrival capacity, the departure capacity. The ultimate constraint for us is how many runways we have, and that's not going to change.
Okay. So, you know, right now, on average, how many flights go out of SFO per day?
So about 1,250, so about 625 arrivals.
Okay, that's right. So you're saying, so you're just going to get up to 1,500-
Roughly, yeah.
-if we get to the 71 million? Okay, so that's an additional 250 flights. So in regards to hours in that peak zone, does that add an additional hour, or does that add additional two hours in the peak zone per day?
Again, it really depends on where airlines see an opportunity. I know that there are periods of capacity before 9:00 a.m., there's periods of capacity in the mid-afternoon period, where there's not capacity is from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, essentially.
Okay. All right. So based upon your years of experience, you think that airlines could potentially move these additional 250 flights during the daylight hours?
It's difficult for me to predict how airline growth will occur. We've seen an ebb and flow in terms of where it happens. We spent a lot of years seeing domestic traffic grow. We're in a place right now where international traffic grows, so it really depends on, in the next 10 to 12 years, where that ramp up occurs. If it's domestic, it's more likely that the growth will occur during daytime hours. International really depends on the particular market. If it's to Asia, it tends to be more in the 11 to noon timeframe. So again, it's tough to predict, and it really depends on where that traffic ramp up occurs, and that's something we really can't predict.
Okay. So if there's flights going over to Asia, and when they take off from SFO, you're saying that the airport doesn't have any jurisdiction over that, doesn't have a say?
The airport's actually prohibited by federal law from dictating how airlines schedule their flights. I know in other council presentations on this topic, the question of curfews has come up. Similarly, that window has been closed by the federal government in terms of the ability to impose curfew, so that's a ship that has essentially sailed for U.S. airports. The ones that already have it in place have it in place, and other airports like SFO that don't, we kind of need to look at other solutions.
Okay. So do you think that additional increase in flight traffic, a considerable amount, can come from international flights?
Again, difficult to say. We've seen a real ebb and flow over the years. Beginning of the 2000s, we saw the largest drop in air traffic of any U.S. airport, and it was really driven by SARS. So those types of conditions, if there's a major economic shift that takes out capacity to Asia, we're probably going to see the largest drop of any U.S. airport.
The current trends, though? Current trends are increasing, aren't they?
So the current trend is international traffic growth. Our domestic growth is actually on the decline with the merger of Alaska and Virgin America. They're actually taking capacity out of our airport, so essentially, our traffic is flat right now.
Okay. And then, you know, you had a slide that showed $8.4 billion in revenue. Who is the recipient of the revenue?
So those are the businesses that operate at the airport. So those are retails, restaurants, shops, et cetera, that are generating that level of business activity.
And where does it go? Who's the recipient?
So essentially, the main recipient would be those businesses. They do pay rent to-
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the revenue is, yeah, so then, yeah, like, sales tax and things such as that. I know you also have a hotel that's got, is that in San Francisco, or is that in Millbrae? San Bruno?
So the transit occupancy tax for that hotel will go to San Mateo County.
Okay. All right. So, you know, I mean, of course, when I go to the airport and I see all these, you know, all the new construction, it looks beautiful and, you know, very luxurious. So to pay for those things, is that revenue that's coming in to SFO and then being used to do all these things?
So different airports finance their projects by different means. Some airports let airlines pay for it. SFO self-finances all of its projects, including the hotel. The way that the airport does this is by the issuance of airport general revenue bonds, which generate the revenue we need to do these construction projects, and then we pay back debt service on those financial instruments over the course of many, many years. So a good example is the international terminal that opened in 2000. We're actually still paying debt service back on that project so many years later.
Okay. Does San Francisco, the city of San Francisco, receive revenue from the airport, from these sales and this potential TOT?
The city of San Francisco receives what's called an annual service payment from the airport. That's a portion of the rent and other fees that we charge users at the airport.
Do you know what that amount is?
Last year, I think it was in the amount of 40-some million dollars.
Okay, 47 million. City of San Francisco-
No, 40, mid-40s.
Mid-40s. Okay. All right. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Moving on, that brings us to item B, proclaiming April 14th through the 20th, 2019 as Mosquito Awareness Week. So I'll go ahead and read that proclamation. If you, two of you want to come up?
Hi, Carolyn.
Hello.
And Megan, remind me how to say your last name.
Exactly as it's spelled, Sebey.
Sebey. Got it. Okay. So, "Whereas mosquito and vector-borne diseases continue to cause illness and death in California, including 203 illnesses and eight deaths from West Nile virus in 2018. And whereas invasive 80s mosquitoes have now spread to 305 cities and 12 counties in California, creating significant impacts to the health and comfort of residents and visitors alike. And whereas the San Mateo County mosquito and vector control district's science-based program of integrated vector management, IVM, works to protect San Mateo County from mosquitoes and other diseased vectors and prevent diseases they transmit. And whereas the public's awareness and cooperation are critical to effective mosquito and vector control in San Mateo County and throughout California. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Brisbane hereby declares the week of April 14th through 20th, 2019, to be recognized as Mosquito Awareness Week." So I just want to thank you so much to Carolyn Parker for your service as the city's representative on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees, and thank you to Megan for coming tonight. Do you have any updates for us, either of you, that you'd like to share?
Thank you for making room for us on the agenda, and thank you again for recognizing Mosquito Awareness Week. I do have an update on the 2018 West Nile virus season. While of course, even a single death from West Nile virus is one too many, last year was a fairly mild West Nile virus season. As usual, we didn't see any human cases in San Mateo County. We only had a handful of dead birds that tested positive, and it was only on one occasion that we saw any infected adult mosquitoes. That was in East Palo Alto, toward the middle of August, so there was only that one time. So we got off kind of lucky last year. Unfortunately, we don't know what kind of year we're going to have this year, or in fact, whether it will be the year that invasive 80s mosquitoes arrive in San Mateo County. So we're doing our best to stay prepared for whatever next year is going to throw at us. So I really appreciate your support. And while I'm here, I'd also like to put in a plug for our open house, which is going to be held on April 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at our office in Burlingame, and I hope you guys can all join us for that.
Thanks. Carolyn, a resident came up to me and mentioned that there were mosquitoes somewhere behind Mission Blue that were breeding. Did that, I told that resident that they should bring that up with you, but looking at the look on her face, I'm guessing that they did not.
I don't know who that was.
It was Tony Varios brought that up to me the other day. Okay, so we can figure out where that's at, but I wanted to make sure while I saw you that I let you know. Anybody want to say anything?
I have a question.
Sure.
So how active are you dealing with mosquitoes out in the Baylands?
We're actually really active right now. I know you guys have some development planned out there, and I spoke with a technician who works in that area just the other day, her name's Kim, and she said that she'd been out there and that with all the additional rain, she was having to treat a lot more acreage of water out there than usual, but she's staying on top of it, and you shouldn't be noticing any mosquito impacts. And I actually asked her how she thought the Bayland development was going to affect mosquitoes in your area, and she said that she thought in the short term, all the construction might present some problems that would have to be treated, but that she thought long-term it would probably make it a little easier to do her work out there.
Yeah. I know they've been doing a lot of work out in the Baylands, so-
Yeah, I know they've been doing a lot of work out in the Baylands, so maybe that creates more opportunities for, you know, for the rain to puddle.
Yeah, any anything that's going to hold water, whether it's a hole or anything like that, has to be treated regularly, but Kim's staying on top of it.
Okay, good, thanks.
Just to be clear, there's no approved development plan out there yet.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pass this over to you guys.
Do I, right?
Okay.
So this is my first one that I've given out.
Thank you.
Thank you Carolyn for your service.
Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, yeah, there's actually an item that is on here that I'm kind of a part of, so I should probably.
Oh.
Remove item B.
Yeah, alright, so should I step out or should? Okay, yeah, yeah, alright, I'll just step out.
Okay, but I'll make a motion for A and C.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye, okay, remove item B.
B and D?
We'll wait for Cliff to leave the room. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Okay.
Second up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Cliff can come back.
Well, isn't, did you say B or D?
B.
B.
B is in boy.
Isn't the one that's affecting him?
B. B.
D?
Right here in Madison, I don't know.
No, no, wait on.
Oh, I have.
On a consent calendar.
I don't have an item D.
I have it as D on my agenda, so I must have an old version.
We've got a different agenda.
Yeah. Okay, so what, just to clear, what's on my consent calendar is adopt city council minutes of March seventh, accept investment report as of.
We don't have the minutes.
She's operating from a different agenda.
The agenda is for D, approve Excelsior Running Club's second annual.
We don't have an item D.
Okay, let me give you that item.
Yeah, that's why I was like, we're talking about B, I'm talking about D.
It's B on the website.
Mine says D.
We don't have an item D. And if that's what was publicized.
Huh?
Okay, so what item is not, are we, because I have four items and I'm assuming.
We only have three.
So which is the item that we're missing?
City Council.
I'm sorry, the.
The minutes.
The minutes were replaced by the Excelsior Running Club. So the A is the investment report, B is the running club and C is the sponsorship of BDW.
Okay.
And there is no item D and the minutes are not on there.
Okay.
Okay.
Glad we cleared that up, alright, now we're.
So you want to give her an operating menu?
No, no, I think that's the only mistake, but we'll find out.
It might not be good.
So that brings us to new business. Item A, discuss the cannabis issues ad hoc subcommittee recommendations regarding cannabis business taxation in retail storefront businesses and provide direction to staff as necessary. So I am happy to give a little bit of a background and if Terry wants to jump in, she can, since this is coming from our subcommittee. And then I did ask Mitch to come here tonight because he had a couple of meetings with some information that I thought would be relevant. And then I don't know if anybody else would like to put in.
In terms of just kind of maybe the normal way we we handle this is we have the staff report first from Julia and then from there you can.
We can give our background.
Discussion and Mitch is here to provide you some information also.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, actually it won't be Julia, it'll be me, but anyway, thank you Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, in two thousand and seventeen, the city council adopted a number of regulations to allow various types of cannabis businesses related to distribution, lab testing, manufacturing and delivery only retail in certain zones in the city. The one use that's missing from permitted uses at this particular moment is storefront retail. So that's not allowed anywhere in the city at the current time. And that was the issue that was precipitated for the discussion by the ad hoc subcommittee meeting to discuss the city's land use regulations and potential, as well as potential taxation. And subsequently, the subcommittee discussed the potential for allowing limited storefront retail cannabis subject to use permit approval in the city's commercial districts. And the subcommittee recommended limiting the number of storefront retail businesses to up to four with buffers between businesses to avoid over-concentration, which is fairly similar to other jurisdictions that do allow retail cannabis. And then the other issue was tax structure and I think on the second page of the staff report, there's a series of taxing options based on the type of land use that the subcommittee recommended. So with that, it's really up to the council pleasure as to what direction you want to provide staff or the planning commission with moving forward with any changes in zoning regulations or for moving forward with the taxing proposal that would have to come back to the council to go on the ballot in November, I believe. So that would conclude staff's comments.
Yep.
I'm not ready for storefront retail. And I think four is excessive for our size of our city if the council does or the rest of the council does want to allow it. Personally, I don't want to allow it. I'm okay with the taxation structure of the other, but I'm not ready for storefront retail.
Did we want to hear from Mitch, his input and then we can have discussion?
Yes, I would.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Mitch Bull, Economic Development Director. Last week, I attended the CAL Ed seminar in Anaheim, which is the California Local Economic Development Association, based in Sacramento. And I had the ability to sit in on a panel with discussing cannabis in the state of California. And I did want to bring some information to the council in general about where things are in the cannabis business in California and what other communities are looking at doing. As of two thousand and eighteen, California produces six point seven million pounds of marijuana and cannabis. Okay, consumption is only one point six million pounds of cannabis in all the things that they are doing that are regulated legally. They are projecting by two thousand and twenty-two, production will hit thirteen point seven million pounds, but consumption will only go to two point five million pounds. Basically because approximately eighty percent of municipalities still do not allow any retail of any kind, which is strangling the the supply chain basically. In addition, there are only forty-nine approved certified testing labs in the entire state, which is also another bottleneck. This comes from HDL Cannabis, which is a research and government working group that helps municipalities administer the cannabis programs in their communities. In Washington State in two thousand and fifteen, a pound of cannabis was selling for about two thousand dollars. It's now three hundred dollars because of overproduction. So one of the things that municipalities have to look at is you want to keep this fledgling industry alive to not drive consumer demand to the black market. And most of the experts that that were at the panel that I sat in said that you really have to look at tax in the supply chain and in just production of like one to two percent, three percent being the very height. Because you don't want to make things so expensive that everyone goes to the black market. In the state of Washington, the cannabis is taxed at fifty percent when you count the excise tax for the state and all the other municipality taxes and sales tax. California is about forty-five percent, although the legislature is trying to reduce the excise tax from fifteen to eleven. So pretty much it's, the rules are being rewritten every every three months from the state. So that's pretty much what I can tell you right now, but there's going to be an oversupply. I think a lot of the people that are in the business now won't survive the the drop in in the pricing when it comes. But it's a fledgling industry that will survive and California is still the largest market for cannabis in the world currently.
Did you, I might have missed it, but did you state how much in, like what what the size of the industry is in terms of dollar amount for California?
I didn't. The industry right now in in US sales alone, in the US, legal sales, is eight and a half billion dollars in two thousand and eighteen. In California, it was two and a half billion of the eight and a half billion. They're expecting that it will grow to twenty billion nationwide within about five years. Depending depending on how many more states legalize personal use.
And that's with eighty percent of cities not approved?
Yeah, now, when I say eighty percent of cities, that's that's pretty much in California.
Right, in California of that two billion.
Currently.
Industry, so that means that that two billion dollars that's generated is coming from twenty percent.
Correct.
Of cities that allow it, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Council questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mitch. So Mitch, you're talking about this, you know, excess supply.
Yep.
So is it just being stored or is it going somewhere else?
Well, it's 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 being shipped out of the country. It's being shipped between states. Some of it is probably going into the black market. They can't they can't tell you what everything is doing. The problem is states that have jumped into the cannabis business have have been very eager to allow cultivation, allow production, but they're not following up with allowing a place to sell it. So the more people that are in production, you're going to you're going to have a huge oversupply. And like I said, in Washington State, it's dropped from two thousand a pound to three hundred a pound. Same thing's happened in Oregon, same thing's happened in Colorado.
Alright, and then I have a question for the subcommittee. So, you know, were you able to solicit feedback from the four companies that we've, that currently have use permits?
Yes.
You know, in regards to the tax structure and did that seem appropriate and, you know, fair to them?
Yes, they informed our sort of numbers that we have here. Although I feel like we might have been even a little bit more, I don't know. I feel like we might have had a little bit closer to three percent and with two percent. But they kind of, we really pressed them to give us numbers that they felt were fair. But that also they understand that the city also has to have a benefit too. So it was a really thorough discussion and there were even cannabis businesses that aren't currently located in Brisbane that came to give their input. So that's kind of how we arrived.
I know it's kind of odd when you're saying, okay, we want to do this tax and we're going to ask these people who are going to be taxed, what do you think is fair, right? I mean, you don't normally do that, but, you know, we have a situation where you have this new industry and you do not want it to to fail and and continue to stay in the black market. You know, we want to bring things above the surface and and if the city can make some money while also, you know, I don't want to use the pun, but, you know, cultivating this type of. We've been doing that a lot.
It's full of puns today.
Yeah, I know.
What did you have for dinner?
I don't know, yeah.
I think Clay got together before this, I'm pretty sure.
But, you know, but we do want to encourage, you know, these businesses to come to Brisbane and thrive. Now, Grant, I know you commented Clark about, you know, that four is, you know, more than what you want, right? But, you know, I think if we regulate it properly and it brings revenue to the city over the long term, then I, why not be, you know, a favorable city for for this industry?
So from our perspective, I think we think about the long game based on mistakes that other cities have made. So for example, like San Jose had it at ten percent at one point. And so what happened is they've driven so many of these businesses out of San Jose because they can't afford to pay, like it just crushes their margins at that amount. So, you know, we also come from the standpoint of wanting to be competitive where businesses want to, you know, put their roots in Brisbane. And so, you know, something that's fair, that's not money hungry, can kind of be a win-win for both parties. Also, you know, we have a business in particular that's in operation that is one of the biggest cannabis brands, if not the biggest in the country, who wants to expand within Brisbane and, you know, have this be their main operation. But they're going to do that when they're going to, you know, choose a city that has something that's favorable to them in terms of taxes and they want that to be, they want that to be Brisbane, they're already here. So, you know, I think if we look at the long term, there is a potential to attract some businesses that could provide us a lot in sales tax and other sorts of business license taxes and those sorts of things. We had a discussion at that meeting, and correct me if I get this amount wrong, but we had asked one of these businesses in particular, let's say, if they opened up a dispensary, which they totally think that Brisbane would be fine. I think a lot of times we think that we don't have enough foot traffic and we're too small in the town. But from their perspective, they feel that Brisbane is a fine location for them. And so they estimated, I think, at a fifteen hundred square foot store that they could generate, what was it? Two hundred thousand dollars in sales a month? I think it was, do you remember?
I believe that's the correct figure.
It was about that amount. So, you know, that could yield quite a lot in in taxes coming into the city. So and then just a background on kind of how we came up with the number of four. We looked at approving this in anywhere where commercial is allowed to exist right now and having maybe one per zone at a maximum of four. So you might have like potentially one out at Sierra Point because there's going to be some retail that goes in in the HCP development. You might have one on industrial or one in Crocker Park. You might have one at the shopping center, for example, or maybe on visitation, who knows? But so we wouldn't end up as a city that has just a, you know, visitation is now full of dispensaries. That's not what we were going for. So we're thinking that that way we could spread that out, but still have potentially more than, you know, just more than one. So I don't know if you want to add?
Oh, well, that on visitation, that that would be illegal though, right? Because it is proximity to the school?
I don't know the specific geography for whether it'd be illegal or not, but I know it's advisory when you look at the maps.
We did waive it for Crocker Park, that requirement?
Yeah, 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 because it's in the Crocker Park area. But I mean, other areas of of Brisbane, I believe they're not, they don't get the waiver.
The the recommendation that, or the discussion we had was that all of them would be by permit and subject to planning approval. But really, the discussion we had, which was very robust with a lot of community members that or business community that came out, was two-pronged. Many cities have put in taxes before they've approved the use. We did it the opposite way. We approved the use. We found that businesses do want to be in Brisbane. And so far, as I know, there have been no issues with those businesses operating out of Brisbane. And Police Chief can correct me if she's heard differently, but I've heard of no issues. So we we, our discussion was based on two things. One was seeing what the appetite was for the business community and and looking at possible retail storefront and also putting in a tax structure. The tax structure is the more immediate concern because we would need to put that to a ballot. And even if we don't approve a storefront use, we should have that in place. And what we've sort of heard from, or what we did hear from the people that attended was even though a storefront location would generate a lot of sales tax if we put a tax in place, where the real money could be is in the distribution. And that is the warehousing, the freight forwarding, so to speak, of the product and where a community, where a business may want to locate in our community and use this for their distribution center for the entire Northern California region. That could generate at a lower rate than what. That could generate at a lower rate than what a sales tax would be. But every bit of product that goes through that distribution center would have a net revenue seamless, just like Fritos being, you know, delivered and we never see the chips all over the ground. They they would be generating revenue through this community. And as our mayor said, the one of the businesses that's here already really wants to be centralized and get out of the the hyper taxation areas. So that's where we came up with, talking with them, what their profit margin is on different steps and what would be an appropriate tax amount during those steps? And would it be still profitable for them to be here paying a reasonable tax and having a central location than them locating to another tax-friendly or not tax-friendly area? So I think what we really need to look at right now is do we want to institute the tax measure going forward? We can come back and look at many of the details for the storefront and is it appropriate and in what districts? But I think that we have a timetable where we would need to come back with direction to staff to be able to put it on the ballot, to be able to put that taxing mechanism in place to make sure that it's going to be feasible for both us and for businesses that want to come in. The other thing that we talked about with storefronts and in other communities is that they if if a community is going to allow one or four or ten facilities for retail, that there's double that or triple that of businesses that want to come in. And so the prudent thing to do is to put a geographical location and and spread them out and have the ability to look at where it's appropriate and how many in a in a zone that would be appropriate. And that's why we thought if we've designated separate zones for them, we're not going to have all four that are allowed potentially in Brisbane come and all want to be at the Brisbane Village because that's not what we'd want to do. But we also want to have the least amount of going back to the voters to implement a tax. Whereas San Jose put in ten percent, they're going to have to go back to the voters because that's what was voted in. So we need to build in flexibility to how our ballot language is and and what our taxing structure is so that it's a little more flexible. And that's why there's some ranges given. And we've we've found that it could be very lucrative in all of the different arrangements that could be made.
So the if I can get clarification, I mean, the storefront issue, so we have two two items before us. One storefront, the other is this taxation that would then go on the ballot. So it sounds like what you're saying, Terry, is it maybe we bring back the storefront
I
issue at another time and we focus on the ballot question?
From my perspective, what we are wanting from you all tonight is to say, yes, storefront retail is something we'd be interested in looking into because we don't want to go and do all of that heavy lifting, you know, on the subcommittee level to come up with all the restrictions and how we think would work if there's no interest at all. So I think then we can take that back to the subcommittee. I think here is just really gauging that interest and where the council is at so we know what work we need to do. One other thing that I want to add on to what Terry said is that one of the big issues here is finding places to rent where a landlord will allow you to have this type of business. And that, in fact, is actually the biggest hurdle that exists in this whole process. So even if we were to say, you know, you can have, we'll have an upper limit of four, we may never get to that amount because we found that the biggest barrier is actually getting people who are willing to rent. And that is why we wanted to open it up to all of the zones in which commercial exists because then you're widening the possibility that a landlord, even just one, will exist within one of those zones that would be willing to allow it. So if you were super, you know, if you said only at the village, for example, well, you know, you may limit that so much and that there's one landlord there and they might say no. So just giving that flexibility doesn't mean that we're going to get four, even though there might be the interest there from businesses wanting to move in because it boils down to the landlords actually being interested. So that's just another sliver of of the puzzle.
One of the things that that we've seen and and the page four of your report really shows is that all the communities and many of the communities in San Mateo County have passed taxes on businesses they don't allow. And and we did the cart before the horse and we see that now we want to put in the way to get the revenue stream from those businesses. So the decision on storefronts is not time sensitive in the same way that putting the revenue stream into this is. And so we need to come up with ballot language if there's interest to put in a tax structure. And then we also need to come up with a a plan on how to implement storefront if there's that appetite for that also. So there is two different things for discussion, but we're not asking for a vote on any of this tonight. We're asking for feedback and for see what the appetite is because I think it's really important to have the marijuana industry daylighted and keep it from going underground because I think there's more problems when you have something that is so regulated that or overtaxed that it it's undergrounded. We we really want to see what the revenue streams are possible and the amount from from this can be very substantial.
Well, in in a sense, we will be kind of taking a vote because, you know, I think I was real clear on on the taxation part that I'm okay with exploring that. I'm not I'm not okay with the storefront retail. It may, over a period of time, eventually get there, but right now I'm not and I'm just want to vote, so.
Okay.
You know.
Well, I'm not sure how how staff wants us to do this, but I think at in our subcommittee, we wanted to present what we had talked about and give the information. And I think staff wanted to get a consensus on that.
Really, now is not the time, I feel like, to state opinions because we haven't heard from the public yet. And I know we have public that is here to talk and I believe there was a slip submitted. So, you know, if if you two have questions, I welcome that. But I do want to make sure that we hear from the public before we get into the discussion of whether this is something we want to entertain.
You can stand up again. You're welcome. So relative to the businesses that are already here and the businesses that potentially will come here in the future, can you explain a little bit about the lab testing part of it?
Well, I, as I said, there's currently forty-nine labs that are certified in the state of California. So when when a cultivator grows a product, it it has to be lab tested for pesticides, potency, percentage of THC, CBD, whatever the product is that's being marketed. And of course, they're sealed and they're moved and they're tracked through, you know, computer stuff. You know, it's it's tracked all the way through the supply chain. You know, we're building quite a bit of lab potential out of Sierra Point. And, you know, I would think that we would be talking to, you know, Phase Three and and HCP to look at, you know, can we bring in that type of use to Sierra Point for for lab? Because it, whether you're testing, you know, makeup or whether you're testing, you know, THC, it it's just a lab. You're not, it's not a usable, it's not a saleable item. But you can assign a tax increment to the testing part of the distribution chain as well. I mean, and maybe that's one percent. I I don't know. We it is going to be self-limiting in the respect that, you know, at this point, institutional landlords, of which we have many in the park, aren't going to rent cannabis businesses because it's still against the law in Washington. So right now, there's, I mean, we, the council did a brave thing in going out and approving the use, setting it up, and we have operating businesses now. And they're already operating, which is why it would be hopefully beneficial to the city to have a tax structure in place approved by the voters. The limiting piece for dispensaries or additional distribution is going to be landlords. Fortunately, we have some landlords right now who see that, they're small landlords, individual owners, and they are renting to these companies. You know, the institutional ones like Prologis, that that that's going to get tougher not to crack because they're very large, they have loans through the FDIC. And if Washington wants to come in and and put pressure on FDIC basing structures, they can do that, which is why there's no banking in the US right now for cannabis businesses. Most of them are going through the Bank of Canada or or Canadian-based banks. There's thirty-five cannabis businesses on the Canadian Stock Exchange. We also know that the people that own Corona Beer and RJ Reynolds are going to want to get into this field and they're already making inroads in Canada to get into the field. So it's going to be a huge business. And and, you know, the council has gone and and done something to bring that business to Brisbane and and the ability to tax it is there, but you want to keep it growing and not go back to the black market.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
So I have one slip here regarding this issue, which is Carolyn Parker.
Karen, you brought up exactly what I was gonna question about, but I wanted to know, has there been any interest in any medical marijuana research? I know in Long Beach, there's a company that is developing glaucoma drugs from cannabis. I've been following that particular company for thirty years, actually. So I was wondering, has there been any interest in in bringing any of that kind of research into this area? And because it looks like it would be a good area, but basically you asked the question I needed. I wanted to know that.
Thanks. I'm not aware of any businesses approaching the city. Planning might have a, no, okay. But I think, you know, we, the problem is that so many of like our commercial space is filled right now. There's not like a whole lot of room for even new businesses to come in. But I think when we see this build-out happening at Sierra Point, I could definitely see, you know, maybe in the next three to five years, that being a potential, for sure.
Madam Mayor, can I add to that?
Yeah.
So because of my company and and what we do, the FDA regulates claims that can be made about substances from a medical perspective. And I actually think it's going to be many, many years out before the FDA gets anywhere near close to approving something as a glaucoma treatment from cannabis. If we can't even get vitamin E through the FDA as a as a cure-all for something else, I think it's going to be a long time.
That's not saying that there won't be testing or, you know, research or something.
But I don't think that what the subcommittee looked at, that we were looking at finding a way to monetize testing for that kind of, you know, research. We we didn't put a research tax in our recommendations. We, because we don't feel that that's something that would be viable to because we already allow testing here in in appropriate zones through our prior law. So we didn't look at finding a way to monetize research.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak to the council? Okay, seeing some nods. Okay.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank Madam Mayor and the honorable counsel, staff, and the community of Brisbane. You have been progressive, accepting, and welcoming to our industry.
Let's take your name.
Oh, hi, Michelle DeZitser with Cana Box and Cana Works. We hope to be a model. Thank you for being so welcoming. We hope to be a model and help develop best practices and benefits that can really help the community on all levels. We really want to help build a long industry here. There's so much potential in so many different ways. One of the things, a few things I wanted to kind of mention and talk about is from a tax standpoint, you guys did a zero can of tax. It probably, it's one of the best approaches personally to get businesses going because they're being taxed at such a high rate. It is very difficult. Most of them aren't in business unless they're very, very big. Personally, we're a small business, but we're helping, we're trying to help small businesses succeed. And the goal is to really help craft cannabis, right? Hopefully federally, it will be legalized and at some point, states will open up and everyone's going to want to have California craft cannabis, but we have to keep it alive. So I just was hoping to mention a few things. I have some trends that I brought together, some kind of similar to what Mitch kind of discussed. Lowering tax to curb illicit market, this is one of the largest issues right now. The illicit market has grown more than it has ever been. Oakland is offering, lowering taxes and offering alternative city-based tax fee incentives to offset lack of federal write-offs. Federally, we have two eighty E, so we have no write-offs at all except cost of goods sold. California in general is trying to lower their excise tax and to help the regulated market. And like I just said, the illicit market and it's, the illicit market, why we call it the illicit market is because people want to be legal. Companies want to be in the regulated industry. It's very difficult from a financial standpoint, from a licensing standpoint, and a survival standpoint. So the illicit market is growing because we had a industry before, medical industry before, which people relied on for their businesses, you know, medical, medical businesses. So it's difficult for people to make that transition. One of the, I also wanted to talk about come a few nearby cities. Most, a lot of cities are looking to lower their taxes exactly for that reason because businesses are leaving and they want to encourage them to come back. Zero has a, San Francisco, zero percent through two thousand twenty-one and up to five percent on retail and the first five hundred Ks exempt. Santa Rosa is zero on distribution, one on manufacturing and up to three on retail. Emeryville is one on distribution, two on manufacturing, and three on retail. I think there's an approach, a creative approach to possibly do zero taxes initially for a period of time to really build a strong, diverse group of businesses. Long term, it's going to pay off to have that stability. And then almost do a scaled tax. Really, one, all businesses should be involved in community and have community participation and support different community events. So I think there's equity programs that can be established to help veterans, really look into Brisbane and see what we can do as an industry to help the community. Things to consider, how to create a stable revenue. And when you're evaluating, you know, when you're assessing the value capture, you want to make sure that you're thinking kind of long term. So smaller businesses, I think, are having the biggest hit and we want that to kind of support them to help their diversity. Once legalization happens on a larger scale, we want to be able to have that different. One, they've been doing it, you know, forever. They have the data, the knowledge. And we don't want to lose that from a medical standpoint as well. And then I put some options for Brisbane. I don't want to take up too much time that you guys, you know, my own kind of example of what could be considered. Honestly, I think scaling is really great. You know, small businesses have zero. Once you hit a certain point, you start paying, you know, paying taxes and really supporting the city on multiple levels. And then from a retail standpoint. on multiple levels. And then, from a retail standpoint, I think it is crucial for retail and consumption lounges, because if we don't have them, then people don't really have a place to go. One, from Brisbane's standpoint, you are located in such a great area, you will bring in a lot of traffic and visitation from a consumption standpoint, and I think that can bring a lot of revenue as well. As well as, it gives people a place to have a community, whether they're doing yoga or they're having a night out. So, there's a lot of different amazing capabilities. And from glaucoma and research, our company is really trying to gather data on how consumers are reacting to cannabis and how brands can benefit. And slowly, we want to actually give our information to researchers so that they can continue to do research and help really figure out what's going on and how we can use this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. Epidiolex is FDA-approved already for epilepsy, and then CB, they just came out, FDA wants to regulate CBD, which can be...
Of course they do.
Exactly. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no hands, that brings us to council discussion. We all know where Clark's at. I'm assuming he hasn't changed his mind, but if you have, let me know. I'd love to hear from Karen or Cliff, where you guys are at on this item.
I am okay going forward with this. I fully support the idea that we, we should be looking at it and how we can be ahead of the curve and do it right, whatever that looks like from a tax perspective and whatever that looks like relative to our storefronts. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with us looking at it further.
Okay.
Yeah, on the storefront issue, you know, when we were first dealing with this, yeah, it was, it was awkward, but you learn, you see what the trends are, and people are more comfortable with it. I think it's different than, you know, when, when we were younger. And, and so, to me, when, when things are more out in the open, and then they're more above board, and I think that's, you know, that, I think that creates safety and responsibility that perhaps doesn't exist as well as it should. So, exploring different places for storefront, I, I'm okay with that. You know, in regards to the, the taxation, you know, so, part of the reason why I wasn't in favor of it was because I, I felt it was a good strategy for us not to, to charge anything, to bring in these companies, have them get established, be comfortable being in Brisbane, and then eventually, you know, gradually do a tax. They're, they want to be here, they're comfortable being here, and, you know, and I think it gives us an advantage. Now, all these cities are, are lowering their taxes and coming up, like San Francisco, I was surprised when I read how low it was and things that they're trying to do. They're trying to capture that market. And so, yeah, you know, of course, you, you never like to say no to money, but, you know, I'd rather make more money in the future than make a little bit now, and, and then it just kind of dribbles in a little bit into the future. Though, you know, a company like Caliva, they're a big company. They're going to stay here, you know, maybe part of their thing is like, well, we have a little bit of a tax. We'll be the only ones here, and that's what we kind of like. They can ride out that, yeah, that, that certain percentage of, of tax, whereas a smaller business might not be able to. So, yeah, you know, for me, I'd rather kick it back to you guys to have further discussion on it. I think we have enough time to bring it back before the council and, you know, to put it on the ballot. So, that's where I'm at.
I think so, too. I mean, Michelle brought up some things that we hadn't really discussed at the subcommittee level, and the numbers that Mitch brought back are a little bit different than what was at the subcommittee level also. So, is it possible to have a ballot measure that says something like, you know, at 2021, then it'll be 1% for across the board, and 2022, 2%, and scaling up that type of, can you pass something like that that's more like future-based?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
That's how we did the tank farm.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Oh, go ahead.
And could we also consider the, the financial tiering of taxes, which makes sense to my mind?
So, when we did the tank storage tax, we had up to a certain amount that we passed at a ballot measure so that we wouldn't have to go back to the voters if it changed, and we had an agreement on where it was going to start. That changed pretty rapidly, and we were able to be flexible with the way the ballot was written. And so, Daly City and Mountain View, a couple of the cities here have up to, and didn't put, or they put a maximum of. And I think that that's something that I would be comfortable with having staff come back to the subcommittee so that we could look at those kind of things without having any hard dates in them.
Okay.
And sort of see where, at that point, we could see where the market is and, and what the trends are, and we're not locked into something. But I think that's something that staff could come back to us with a ballot language that we could look at and see if it meets the needs. On the distribution particularly, I think, I would like to see that remain because I think as, as a harder number, because I think that's where there's more of an opportunity without having to, to tap into the retail. But again, that's something we can discuss in the subcommittee.
Sure. And I thought distribution is where the margins were slimmer, right, for business owners?
Manufacturing was slimmer. I mean, testing was certainly, they said, slimmer.
Well, it's testing, I thought they said that you could charge a lot for it because they, we could work that out on...
Yeah, you guys, just talk about that. Let's see, I, just one more thing in, in regards to retail that, you know, I heard four votes, and like I said, I'm not ready for it. And, you know, you, go up Bay Shore here, up to San Francisco, right there before Leland, right on Bay Shore Avenue, I think it's a medical marijuana dispensary. You got two guards standing out front, two guards. That looks real trashy. Two guards. Constantly. I mean, to me, that degrades the neighborhood, and I'm not ready to go there with that. I mean, you don't see guards in front of liquor stores.
Well, I've seen a guard in front of our B of A before.
Yeah.
Yep.
If that's the rationale you want to do, use and, and say it, but, you know, you're going to have kids hanging out there, too. So, you're going to have to deal with that, you know? I think right at this time, it's a mistake to do that, to tax portion, but you add this in there, might have a problem on the ballot. Might have a problem. So, you know, the tax portion on, on how you want to do it is, is fine, but you start adding retail and everything else in there, it's like, Brisbane has a very diverse tax base right now. And to throw everything else in there and saying, oh, yeah, we could, you know, do this or that, you know, we've got to be leaders, you know, it's like, I don't want to, I don't want to use the word, I'll use the initials of BS. And I'm not sure where these studies are coming from, if they are studies or just people's opinions. I'd like to see the studies, you know, because the data, it's like, how, how's this data all of a sudden come out, you know, and you're just starting this, this, it's a new industry, basically, and it's been illegitimate for many, many years. So, you know, what, what did we vote this in, what, two, three years ago, whatever it was, and now, got all this data, oh, it's going to go away. I don't believe that. I don't believe that at all. You know, it's like, show me the data, you know? So, I think we're premature on that. I'm done.
So, a question for staff. The taxing needs to go to the voters, whatever we do. What we decide as a community to do as far as storefront and retail is a different issue and is not necessarily need to go to the voters. It can be a council and a public community issue, so.
I think we go to planning commission first, right?
Yeah, they're, they're separate, they're separate tracks. I just want to clarify one thing and just remind you of another thing. Your recycling business license is an up-to number, and we're still not at the up-to. So, that is a model that we've used before. Secondly, the, the staff report indicates that the, if the direction on the retail would go next to the planning commission, but I heard the discussion from the subcommittee about it coming back to the subcommittee first, so if that's what you would want.
I would like...
I think we need to thrash it out a little bit more to give better direction.
Okay.
And concerns to the planning commission so that they get it on the right track so that we don't just keep rehashing it.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thank you.
I think staff has enough direction on this item. So, we'll go ahead and move on to item B, which is, consider approval of Resolution Number 2019-08 and Resolution Number GBMID 2019-01, approving amendments to the water supply. Wait, this, is this what we're, this is not what we're taking off, right?
We are doing this one, ma'am. You're doing great. Just keep reading.
Okay.
Keep on reading.
Water supply agreement between the city and county of San Francisco and wholesale customers in Alameda County, San Mateo County, and Santa Clara County. Staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. So, I realize the staff report looked quite weighty, but what you're dealing with is you are approving amendments to an agreement that's approximately 175 pages long. So, you have a redline version of it in your package, you have a clean version of it in your package. When you combine those two together, that's 98% of the weight of the document that you're dealing with. So, so what I'd like to do is walk through the seven substantive changes to it, if you don't mind. If you'd turn to the second page of the staff report, which is also listed as, I think, page two of 372, I'll go over those with you. And if you would, let me cover just a few acronyms first in case I go into an acronym-heavy mode so we all know what we're talking about. First off is Bouska, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. Bouska is an organization that represents 26 member agencies who get some or all of their water from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, okay? And the SFPUC is a subcomponent of the city and county of San Francisco. And as you know, most of their water, not most, a large, very large percentage of their water comes out of Hetch-Echey, but they also have local reservoirs, and depending upon the season, we get waters from the local reservoirs, okay? The last acronym I'll hit is WSA, which is the Water Supply Agreement. That's the document that we're approving changes to this evening, and that goes back a couple of decades now. And really what that is, that's the formal terms and conditions under which the SFPUC agrees to provide water to the member agencies of Bouska, okay? So, there's, that's enough acronyms for one night. So, here's the seven big things that we're looking to do. First, the first one listed there says oversight of SFPUC's capital improvement program. A number of years ago, legislation was put into place that allowed Bouska, on our behalf, to oversee and interact with the SFPUC while they were building the $3 billion water supply improvement program. Now, that program was really building new projects, okay? That program was building earthquake resiliency. This is a different program. This is their 10-year plan to do operations and maintenance on their system. And, and what was kind of interesting about that is at first, you know, there was a little rumbling and grumbling, you know, nobody likes having somebody look over their shoulder. But it turned out at the end of the day that San Francisco actually appreciated it very much, that we had professional staff from Bouska overlooking those projects, overlooking the design of those projects. Some helpful suggestions have come out, and on our side, it's been very beneficial because we've been able to keep the projects on schedule, and we've also been able to help keep some of the project costs down. The second item that we're going to approve is the Tier One Drought Allocation Plan. What happens is the way we get reductions during a drought, the way it's supposed to happen unless San, unless Sacramento gets involved, is that San Francisco decides when there's a drought. And then, when they do, the Tier One Plan kicks in. And what the Tier One Plan says is, here's how much San Francisco's going to get, and here's how much all you guys are going to get. And then, within Bouska, we have to figure it out amongst ourselves. It's a different plan. Oddly enough, it wasn't caught when this agreement was first being put into place, there was some perverse calculation in the methodology they had come up with, that during a drought, San Francisco actually got more water. Yeah, that's not going to work. I, I know, that doesn't work at all. So, what this does is it changes it so that they get a minimum of a 5% cutback, and that cutback that they take gets reallocated amongst all the member agencies. So, these things all make sense so far. The third item we've got there, it says, the required 2018 decisions. What that refers to is that the WSA had originally required that San Francisco by 2018 make a decision as to whether or not to make San Jose and Santa Clara permanent customers. As of right now, they're interruptable customers. San Francisco can cut them right off. The challenge we've had is you may have noticed that we've had a lot of things going up on the watersheds. We've had the supplemental environmental document, we've had negotiated settlements going on with the water rights people up there and with Mr. Babbitt, you know, formerly of Arizona, the former governor of Arizona, trying to settle all that. We've had FERC issues going on, there's some relicensing on some hydroelectric dams. So, what the parties are agreeing to here is that we will defer that decision in 2028 because we just don't have the information. We don't know who's going to get what kind of water right now. So, we're deferring that. And the note they talk in there when they're talking about supply guarantee increase, all that is, is a requirement that the SFPUC provide an annual update to their commission indicating the progress they are making on getting the additional 9 million gallons a day that San Jose and Santa Clara would need to become permanent customers. So, that's all that is. Asset classification, probably the one that I find the most interesting, but it takes a little bit of explanation. So, the Bouska member agencies consume 2/3 of the water that come out of Hetch-Echey. So, when you have an asset, if you have a major pipeline that all it does is provide potable water, we get to pay 2/3 of the cost. San Francisco gets to pay 1/3 of the cost. Now, many of you may also know that San Francisco generates very much of the municipal power that they use out of the hydroturbine generators that they have, okay? Those assets are classified as power. Now, if an asset only provides power, that's only to the benefit of San Francisco, so they get to pay for all of it. And then, we have mixed assets, which provide both power and water, so we divide that in half, San Francisco picks up a half of that, and then of the other half, they pick up a third of that, and we pick up 2/3. So, guess what happens in the bowels of San Francisco's accounting when they decide, well, where should we put this new asset on? They picked the category that was most beneficial to them, of course. And so, that caused us quite a bit of turmoil, and what this is, is this is a long and lengthy process that went on for years. We actually had to hire the former general manager of Bouska to come in because he had actually been a San Francisco PUC long-term employee at a very high level, and we've negotiated where those assets are to be classified. So, again, to our benefit, so there's no question that we're paying for power assets. As we start to get into items five, six, and seven of these substantive items, these were items that were requested by San Francisco, okay? So, the first one, wholesale capital fund. The present WSA says that when it comes to capital funds, they have to balance their revenue and their expenses every five years. And what San Francisco was finding is that that was creating some challenges with them for their accounting, for their bonding, for a lot of their financial process. So, they have asked that they can do that on an annual basis now. Bouska staff looked at that request, and in their opinion, it's, it's revenue neutral, it's a net neutral to us, it doesn't cost us anymore, it doesn't save us any money, so we feel like that's something we can easily give up. Number six, the Water System Improvement Program. So, this is the WISUP. This is the, the building of new projects. It was originally supposed to be done, I want to say, 2015, and it looks like it's going to be five or six years delayed. So, we've added that completion date in, and we both agree that, okay, it's going to take you longer to do that. Much of that has had to, has been a result of what's going on at Calaveras Dam, where it seems like every time they believe they know where the abutments is, they go through, and as they start to excavate it, they find another fault line. So, we've had some pretty significant cost overruns and some project and schedule delays out there. So, that just extends it so that we both agree it. So, we're not telling them, hey, you said you were supposed to be done, but we all know you're not going to be done. The very last one is the Regional Groundwater Storage and Recovery Project. That is a program where SFPUC, working with specific member agencies of Bouska, most notably Daly City, and what they do is during the time of year when they have excess water available in the system, and we, as users, are not going up and using the full amount that, that we could, because we just don't have any use for it, it's winter, they take that water and they run that into wells. And so, then Daly City injects that into wells, and the agreement is that when we go into drought mode, the member agencies that have participated with that, you pull that water out and you use it first so that we can allocate Hetch-Echey water and local water to other customers. So, those are the seven substantive ones. I can go over the minor ones as well if you'd like. I can answer any questions. I can go over the minor ones as well if you'd like, I can answer any questions you like. I've spent a lot of time looking at this, I know the city manager's been to a couple of meetings with me on it. I know that both Tom and Michael Roushe have looked at it, so we're satisfied. Our recommendation is you approve these, but as always, I'm here for questions.
So if we were to try to make a change or get clarification on anything, all this would have to go back to the entire Bouska board for any changes to be made, correct? Because it's a, a community document.
Well, so I'll phrase the response a little bit differently than you asked it, ma'am. The way the water supply agreement is written right now is that when member agencies representing 70% of the volume consumption that we get from SFPUC have approved the document, the document's approved, and that's already happened.
Yeah, it says in this staff report.
So ours is moot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just have a, just want to get clarification on that, because I never heard of Daly City having wells.
Yeah.
That were significant. So is that, was that an existing aquifer that, that we then tapped into these wells?
Yes, absolutely. It exists, but it's, there's, there's a number of new wells they put in. This project's been going on for probably longer than five years now.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, it, it actually is, and they put a significant amount of water in there. It's, it's a good idea. If you have an aquifer, it is by far the best place to store water, right? Because drilling a well, drilling a well's a couple hundred thousand dollars. Building a reservoir is at least $2 a gallon. There, there, it's incredibly expensive to build above-ground storage. So reservoirs are smart. In fact, it's one of the things, you haven't seen it yet, but when we did the water supply assessment for one of the projects out at Sierra Point, we found that they were going to be short some water. So we had them do two things that, that they agreed to. One of them is they're going to go out and they're going to upgrade our entire irrigation system out there at Sierra Point to put in much more efficient rotors that actually, we call them match precipitation rotors, so that, that the sprinklers actually act more like gentle rainfall other than the rainbirds just going chchchchch and just spraying water everywhere. But the other thing they're going to do is they're going to fund a $50,000 study where we're going to go back and reevaluate with a little more technical review as to whether or not we actually have any aquifers in Brisbane that we could get a reasonable amount of storage in, and to also look at the potential for doing what I call hardened storage, where you put, there, there are large pipes and such that you put them underneath your athletic fields and you capture stormwater, and you have a small filtration system and you use those for your athletic fields during the year.
Nice, yeah. All right, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No.
I have, I have a question for Randy, just so, other people who may be listening to this conversation can get the answer from the horse's mouth relative to why we don't capture our own water coming off the mountain. Is it the 200, what did you say, $200 per gallon?
It's the $2, it's the $2 per gallon cost. Yeah, the, the problem, and, and you know, it's a great question, and that, you know, ma'am, because that question is coming up even more and more now as we're seeing climate change, okay? Because in years past, we had the 50% plus of our water stored in a snowpack, okay? And the challenge that we have with water during the rainy season is, nobody needs water. Got too much water, the horse says you get too much water during the rainy season because it comes down. So if you were going to use that, you would have to capture it. And at a cost of $2 a gallon, it's an incredible cost, and then you've got to treat it, and then you've got to pump it back up to pressure, and it becomes a problem. But the entire state is going to start seeing that as a problem, because as we have more and more climate change, and as we start getting crazier rain patterns, as we start getting much warmer winters, we're going to have water that doesn't fall as snow as much as it used to. It's going to fall as rain. So it's going to hit those reservoirs that have been sized for snowpack. And so what that water's going to have to do is just run down, and we are going to have to start doing storage. So that's why people like us and others are starting to look now very, very seriously at maximizing underground storage.
Well, especially since, I don't know that everybody knows, that we pay to pump the water up back to San Francisco, and then we pay to bring it back again. So, yeah, maybe we can look at this in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy. I know this has been a, a long task for sure. And one question doesn't really kind of relate to Brisbane, but where's, I know it's on the recovery project I was reading here, but Alameda Creek, where's that located at?
It's, so Alameda Creek is out towards Sanol. If you're going out towards Sanol, that's, yeah, that's.
Isle Canyon Road?
Right.
Oh, that, oh, that's what.
That's it out there, right. They're, they're doing some, some fishing enhancement and, and then they've got some other, they're trying to drop water through the gravel and put it off another aquifer there as well.
I'm, I'm glad to see that we retain our fixed pricing from 1908 for GBMID in the city of Izzitation, now city of Brisbane.
Right, it's a great thing, isn't it?
I looked for that, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so currently, we're allocated a little less than a million gallons.
Yeah, I'd call it one just for rounding numbers, sure, a million gallons a day, sir.
So we're right now at our maximum, right? So almost, or what?
So we are not at our maximum today.
Yeah.
But the problem, which I brought to you when we did the emergency ordinance, is that if we go into a drought year, with the businesses we have right now, we're going to be really tight being able to meet our drought reductions without having to make significant impacts on our residences. And the reason that troubles me so much is that our residences are already, we're already in the 45 to 50 gallon per person per day. Now, I think that's pretty amazing, but honestly, there are people that do better. And certainly if you're living in some of the high rises of San Francisco, you could maybe be even half of that, because you don't have any outside watering, and if you don't have a car, you're not washing a car. But 45 to 50 gallons a day is the number that the World Health Organization says is the amount of water you need per person if you're living in a first world country. And so in my mind, I, I think of it in reverse. I think if a drought happens and I don't have other places to move water or to cut water reduction, to cut water back just primarily on irrigation, I've got to look at the possibility of telling you that we need to put our citizens in a second world country status for the amount of water they have. And I just, I, that's not, I don't find that to be very prudent planning on my part, so I'm trying really hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. So given the Baylands, that there's nothing, no water rights or anything like that.
Correct.
If anything does come to fruition as far as water, how would this apply, this agreement apply, or would it have to be amended for Brisbane's part?
You gave me an easy one there, sir, because it actually, it completely depends. It, it really does depend on where the water comes from. And it depends how it gets routed through the, the arrangement that was studied in the WSA, the transfer through, through the Oakland Irrigation District would have one set of outcomes. There are other alternatives that I'm really not at liberty to speak about right now, because I know, you know, developers are trying to find more than one alternative as they're, as this thing looks like it's coming more and more to fruition and to actually happening. And those would have different outcomes. So it's possible that it would change. One of the things that we're actually trying to, that Bouska has already started to change though now, it's, it's really sort of interesting, we, we could talk about water forever, but one of the things that we have in here is that we all have different individual water supply contracts with SFPUC, even though we have this overarching water supply agreement. But four of the customers with SFPUC have what's called minimum take or pay contracts. And what that means is that if I say you've got a four MGD take or pay contract, if you only use two MGD, you're paying for the other two anyway. And, but then the agreement says we can move water back and forth between each other, but it doesn't say anything about moving the take or pay part of the contract. So if an agency has their take or pay and they're not using the water, they might be interested in transferring it to somebody, right? But they want to transfer the requirement for the take or pay part of it too, right? Because they don't, they don't want to have to keep paying for water that they've transferred to someone else. So Bouska started to bring that up within the last couple of months, and we're working on trying to make that happen. There, there are always going to be ongoing refinements to this. We're starting to enter a new world. It's much like the conversation I was having with council member Cunningham, is that the, the water world is changing. The, the way we store water, the way we get water, where we get water is changing, and we're just going to have to be nimble and, and deal with it.
Yeah, it's just going to get worse with, with all the development that especially our state legislature is encouraging without really looking at the natural resources that it's going to be needed to provide.
I, I agree 100%, sir. I, I think the legislature has forgotten that there are other things that drive whether housing happens or not, and having water is one of them, kind of an important one.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your hard work on this, Randy. It's good to have somebody who's actually on the board, you know, and really knows the, the water.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it.
Ma'am.
I have a question and a comment, just for the council. This is one of, this is the main reason why we actually did not bring cultivation to you today, is if you'll remember, Brisbane allows all other cannabis uses besides retail, storefronts, and cultivation. That is because Brisbane does not have enough water to support that use, so that is why we did not bring that forward. Now, not to put you on the spot or anything, but to put you on the spot, would have, this been an appropriate time to hear from our representative on this board that's not you? Would this, would have this have been an occasion in which our appointed representative would have come and talked to us about this matter?
Well, ma'am, I, I think you, you, we, us have a really unique opportunity here in that you have, she was elected official and now she's a former elected official, so you have her representing one of your water districts. So you have the benefit of having somebody who has perhaps closer, more intimate relationships with the elected officials than I do. But then on the other hand, you also have the opportunity of having an old horse who's been doing water and sewer for 30, 40 years, who can serve on the board and both guide those elected officials and help them be an expert, and also watch out for your best interests. So I think what happens with that elected official that you have on representing the city recognizes that I really have the technical expertise on the matter, so she defers to me to, to bring items like this forward.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a, a better understanding of the dynamic, so that we know, you know, in the event that that position becomes available, you know, what we should be looking for in that representative. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, what, what are, what's the time requirements? How many times do we expect that somebody might come before us to present? So to me, this felt like one of those times, but I don't know a lot about that board to know for sure, so that's why I was asking.
Okay, ma'am, sure.
Okay. Uh, any other questions?
None.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no hands, what's the council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2019 dash oh eight. Can I do them both at the same time, or you want them separate? Okay, approve resolution number 2019 dash oh eight and resolution number GBMID 2019 dash oh one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay. That brings us to staff reports. City managers' report on upcoming activities.
Before I start, I'm, I'm going to have Tom, city attorney, speak to you just quickly about the Rena bill that we have interest in.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Sorry that we could not provide this to you prior to the meeting. This all happened overnight. Last night, AB, SB Senate Bill 672 by Senator Hill was amended. The amendment is to move forward on the Rena amendment for Brisbane that was discussed last year, or earlier this year and last year prior to the, the public voting on approving potential development on the Baylands. This is the follow-up by Senator Hill on that and providing the, the outlines of Rena, Rena exemption for Brisbane. I'll just walk through the, it's very technical, I'm just going to walk through the, the high points. Provision A extends findings and declarations of the specific history of the Baylands project. I only put that in there because it goes into great detail. So just know that there's a whole lot of detail about the history here and how they get to a point of being willing to consider Rena exemption. Provision B specifies the exemption for the fifth and sixth Rena cycles. The fifth is the one coming up, the sixth would be the second exemption for the, the follow-on Rena cycle. Provision C is actually the substantive portion of the bill. It provides an exemption for Rena for the current and subsequent planning period, so the current is fifth Rena, subsequent is sixth Rena, that's why I refer, reference fifth and sixth. And here's what it does. Provide the city takes action during the current planning period to zone for 350% or more of its Rena allocation for this planning period. The Baylands proposal as approved by the voters is roughly 1,000%. I think it's actually a little more, so you're way above 350%. Provided that moves forward on the zoning front, maintains or rezones to accommodate 350% or more of Rena for the subsequent planning period. So if there's a development plan and you move forward on the zoning, you satisfy that. And you submit an annual report to the state, HCD, but to the state, and to ABAG on your progress on the Baylands and on the voter-approved property or parcel use, you are eligible for an exemption from the fifth and sixth Rena cycles as a city. It is unique to Brisbane. No other city is being offered this exemption at the moment. The bill will be heard by the Senate Housing Committee, which is a new committee chaired by Senator Weiner from San Francisco, the week after next. The reason this was all done overnight and a lot of work was done just in the last few days was, while there was a general understanding from some weeks ago that, yes, they did want to provide the Rena exemption, they did want to send a message about incentives for working with the state on housing, they were back and forth on how to do it. This involves technical staff, lawyers for the legislature called Ledge Council, us, as well as other interests. They got it into print last night. It will move forward to the Senate Committee the week after next, and they are requesting that we ask the city for, and we recommend that the city provide, a letter of support for SB 672. It only benefits Brisbane. It is at the request of Brisbane technically, so we encourage the city to authorize the city manager and staff to work with us on a letter of support and to tailor it based on a couple amendments we may, we may be seeking relative to the standard of review for whether or not you are complying with the requirements of the, the bill to get the exemption. I won't bore you with the details, but we want to, we want to narrow in on the, the standard of review for the exemption prior to it becoming hopefully law in the fall. I know this is news, sorry, came out late today.
Can I have one, one question, please? When you say it's for the fifth and sixth cycles, what years does that take us through?
The cycles are being reconsidered. Currently, it would take you through 2021, 2029, or 2028?
2030.
Oh, 2030, okay. I'm off by four years. Up to 30, up to 2038 would be two eight-year cycles. They are considering changing the length of the cycles, Councilwoman O'Connell, but that has not been, that's a separate issue and it hasn't been acted on yet.
Is there a way in what we are asking for in support that if the, we make a mention of our support, that if the cycles change to a shorter year, that our timeframe remains the same?
We can certainly express that interest. What I would encourage the council to do is give discretion to the city manager and city staff to continue working through this. It's become far more technical than anybody expected, and it's because everything's in flux on Rena, that's why it's technical. The concept is not overly technical.
I think this is really great news and a, and a very good, hopeful outcome.
Agreed.
Good job, so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question as Terry, so.
Okay.
It is noted and we'll report back when we know more.
Great, thank you.
So that brings us to city managers' report.
Okay. So some upcoming events, next Tuesday, April 9th, at the Mission Blue Center, we will be having our energy and water benchmarking ordinance workshop. Both residents as well as people who own businesses or work in Brisbane are invited.
So it's that one? I was told. So it's at one? I was told it was at one thirty.
We'll verify. I'm going by whatever reading, reading there.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cunningham will be having her office hours next Wednesday from six thirty PM to eight PM. You heard earlier tonight that Mosquito Awareness Week Open House is this upcoming week. The public is invited to the event at four to seven PM next Thursday at thirteen fifty-one Rollins Road in Burlingame. That's the office of the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. Good news for our school transportation efforts over the years. SAM Trans School Bus Routes will continue into the next school year.
Oh, that's great. Really good.
A round of applause for that one.
Yeah.
And then just a reminder to anybody who knows some young folks are in college that were accepting college, summer college internship applications. And I believe we're gonna be bringing on probably four people this summer, five people? I don't know. This program has gotten more and more popular internally over the years. So we'll probably have four or five young people this year.
And it goes through grads, grad school?
Yeah, we've taken undergraduates. We've taken graduates. And just a reminder that we are accepting applications for two seats on the Public Arts Selection Committee.
That's for the specific.
Project.
Project for this, for, yeah.
And then just a reminder, Ed mentioned that the last meeting, that Recology is going to be coming to the May second meeting to provide you an update on their development plans, both in Brisbane as well as in San Francisco. And just also, I got a request from Councilmember O'Connell this week with regards to trying to provide an update on the quarry operation. So we do have a inquiry into the county council's office on that. And we'll try to get you some updated information on the status of the operation out there.
Great. So that brings us to mayor council matters. Do you start down here and work our way down?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So as you've all heard me say before, I'm probably gonna do things a little bit differently. And this particular instance is no, no difference. So if I hear a rumor in the community, I think what I would really like to do is grab a hammer and smack that nail on the head and get rid of the rumor, confirm or deny. And I've heard in the community that I'm making a concerted effort to unseat two of our city council members, which is completely one hundred percent untrue. I think that we have a great working city council and just want to put it out there that that's not true. And it's come to me from several different places at this point. So I just wanted to say that.
That's good to hear.
I just gotta knock those things.
I know that's not true, but that's good, that's good to hear.
Right, so. Another thing that I would like to bring up and hopefully we can get to discuss or put it on the agenda at some point is since we had SFO here, I thought I'd add that to my list, was to seriously start discouraging long-term parking in Brisbane for SFO. And I, I would really like to knock that one out of the park too.
That could be, that could be something that we might be able to ask the Complete Streets Safety Committee to put their heads together. They seem to be really good at coming up with ideas.
Yeah.
And I think that would be in their wheelhouse.
Awesome. And, and then moving on to the, the other thing that I did with the blessing of our city attorney was I reached out to our committee members and our commissioners and requested one-on-one conversations with everybody on our committees and commissions. And for the people who agreed to meet with me, I mean, there were, there were rules. There were, we were not talking about things that were on our current agendas and, you know, to steer clear of brownneck violations and whatever. And I just want to report to the city council and staff that it was a really great experience. I think people were a little skeptical in the beginning of what's she up to? What is she doing? Why does she want to do this? And, and then the more people that I met with, the more comfortable they became. And then they went back to their committees and commissions and said, hey, that was a really good experience. I was asking people, you know, what are your ideas? What do you love? What do you hate? Blah, blah, blah. And all the feedback, for the most part, was absolutely fabulous. And one of the things that I was saying to people is, you know, I'm a collaborative manager. I think everything we do is very team-oriented. And all of a sudden, there's all these great ideas that people feel like they're empowered to say things. And one particular committee, and I promised I wouldn't throw anybody under the bus. You know, they, they kind of felt that, a couple of people on this committee felt that their work wasn't valuable. And so I think from us working together, making sure that everybody understands that every role that we appoint somebody to is incredibly valuable would be really great. And one of the ideas that came out of that whole one-on-one situation was from two separate people on two different committees came up with the idea of, you know, having a social, like a, like a little luncheon or some, all the committee members and the commissioners and the city council and staff could get together and have a casual social. So I brought that up with Clay and he's going to investigate it with our city attorney to see if it's even possible. But it was a really good experience and I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Yeah, I hope we can do it.
And imagining if we did that, we could do it in like a workshop maybe format where it's noticed to the public, where the public could attend if they wanted to, like kind of like how we do our more informal workshops that we've had on the weekends with staff and city council. Maybe that would be the route to go.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's certainly one approach.
Okay, great. Do you want to report on any of the, because I'm on all of them.
Well, why don't I take public?
Okay.
Okay, so we, we had a public art subcommittee meeting this week, which.
Were we on item B?
I'm sorry. Oh.
Oh.
Sorry.
We're on item A, okay.
I got excited there, sorry.
Okay, never mind. So we need to talk about committee assignments. And the first one being the changes to the school slash city subcommittee two by two. And I have an interest in being a part of this subcommittee along with Councilmember Lentz. I've spoken with Councilmember Conway and he's, has said that he's okay for me to come on board and he will step back. So I just wanted to run this by the council and see if anyone had any objections to that.
I'm sorry, which one?
That is gonna be the school, I think it's now two subcommittees. It's the two by two committee and I believe it, is it the education subcommittee?
The committees eighteen and nineteen?
Correct.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any objections to that change?
No.
Okay, do we need a vote on that or we can just, just noted? Okay, now the other adjustment we had was to the Complete Streets and Safety Committee liaison. I serve on that along with Councilmember Conway. And I know that Councilmember Cunningham had an interest in being a part of this because of her recent appointment to BPAC. We just felt that there is, you know, synchronicity, yeah, a synergy there. So it's, that's something that you're, Clark, that you're willing to allow Karen to?
Yeah, Karen, Karen called me the other day and I said, yeah.
So which one is that? What number?
That would be.
Forty-one.
There's so many, trying to find them.
Any objections to that? No? Okay, moving on. The last one we have here is a heart board. And don't have a ton of background on this one, so I'll just let Councilmember Lentz take it from here.
So so there's two, there's two boards. So there's the heart board, which you get appointed through council of cities. And then there's the board that all the cities in the county, I believe all the cities now within the county contribute. Daly City, I think, was the, the sole city that, that didn't contribute. And so then the cities that do not have a member on heart, on heart are on this board. So I've been doing both because I used to serve on the heart board. But recently I stepped down so I could just focus on more of what's happening in Brisbane. So I, since I've been doing this for quite a few years, I was hoping maybe someone else on the council might want to step into that role and, and learn more about what heart does within the county to raise funds for affordable housing.
This is number eleven. Housing Endowment Regional Trust Member Agency Committee Member. It's on the first page.
Yeah. It, it's, it's a different title though, isn't it? It's like MAC. But I believe.
The way it's presented, Councilmember Lentz, it's the same committee.
It is the same committee, yeah.
So what did you step off of? Just so I know.
So I was on the heart board, but also the city's rep. Yes, I was appointed through council of cities. But I was still the city's rep for this particular committee.
So now you don't want to be the city's rep?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do we still need a city's rep on this board?
Yes, because we're a member agency, I believe, that you would have to have a rep for that, yes.
And does, are the bylaws on that, that it has to be a council member?
We'll have to check the record.
I mean, I would still do it if council, you know, council member couldn't do it. I mean, I think it, it, you know, we should have a council member be on it just because all the other cities have their council members and I think it shows, you know, solidarity that, that we're all in favor of trying to find ways to generate revenue for affordable housing to be built in the county.
I personally, I don't know if this amount on this this table that we have, that shows, or maybe I only have it.
We all have it.
Oh, you all have it. So I don't know if this includes now the two more that I have. But no, it doesn't. So that would put me at twenty-two committees. And the one that I'm an alternate on, it actually is something that I am a part of regularly, which would be Airport Noise. Or actually, that might be designated as two different ones. Anyway, this week I had four or five subcommittee meetings. So at this point, I'm really maxed out on like what I can commit to. So I would not be able to sign myself up for another subcommittee at this point, especially one that's inflexible with a schedule. When it's something that's within our city and we can kind of dictate the time, that's a little bit easier for me to manage. Ideally, I mean, I, I know you don't want to be on it anymore, but I feel like you would still make the most sense because you're also on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And I feel like there's synergy between, you know, whoever our representative is on heart. Also, because you have that institutional knowledge that you've applied so many times at the subcommittee level from being at those meetings. So I think it's really important whoever is our heart representative may be on affordable housing. So, you know, whether that means I have to step off of that if somebody else wants to do it, I don't know. But I think it makes sense, just like if Karen's gonna be on BPAC, it kind of makes sense for her to be on Complete Streets. So there's a flow of information that's, that's easy instead of having it have to come through a council meeting. It makes sense that that information can be shared where those conversations are happening on the ground. So I don't know, is anyone else interested?
I am not available on Wednesdays.
You know, I'll continue to do it. You know, I mean, because I just also, you know, was appointed to the, well, it was supposed to be the CASA Task Force. And, and I'll talk about that later, but now I'm, now it's just the.
Was that, is that on the same day?
No, no. But, you know, somewhat, somewhat related, right? Because it deals with housing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll, I'll continue to do that. They don't meet as often as, as the heart board.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to item B, countywide assignments, subcommittee reports, so.
Take it back.
Okay.
So we met this week for the Public Art Advisory Committee and it's really nice to have something that's so positive and so inspiring to a lot of people in our community. And so we have put out the RFP for the artists. We are also looking for two people to join the adjudication committee for this particular project as well. And yeah, so we, we brainstormed some ideas about, you know, some potential artwork for visitation moving forward. And it's just a, it's a, it's an onward-moving thing. Do you want to add anything to that?
No.
Thank you. Oh, may I say about BPAC as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I did go to the first BPAC meeting. That was fabulous, actually. I really enjoyed it. Glad I'm on it. And, and just listening to the, the presentation about the Complete Streets Safe Routes to School in Half Moon Bay, which is where the money was allocated last year. Brisbane has an opportunity to apply for another four hundred thousand dollar grant for this year, which of course I ran back to Clay with as quickly as I could. And just, just talking about how well that project worked down at the Half Moon Bay Library. And if you haven't been, you should go. How they, they narrowed the crosswalk, put in rain gardens and things like that was really quite fascinating. And so, so yes, being on the Complete Streets Subcommittee totally makes sense for, for what we can bring to Brisbane and, and would help me understand more about what they're doing.
And the needs are, what the needs are.
Yeah, what our needs are, for sure. Thank you.
I had to get out my calendar. So I attended the Emergency Council of Cities Selection Committee regarding the CASA Board. And Councilmember Lentz was appointed to that board or elected to that board, and he'll discuss that later. I attended the Airport Noise Community Group where we met with residents to discuss some of their noise issues to take back to the SFO Roundtable. I attended the SFO Roundtable Meeting where we met with the FAA and they talked about some of their noise issues that, most of which they really don't want to admit to. And I met with some of the cities that we informally that were trying to get a departure subcommittee for on that working group. And was basic, I got a lot of support from those other cities. There's, I think, six that have departure issues. But I was also informed by staff that they do not want to make a departures ad hoc committee, that they would rather have that work go through the technical working group and have two separate, on the same day where staff can attend departures working group and a arrivals working group.
So why would they do one for ground-based noise then and not, how is that different?
Because from what I got from staff is that it was separate. It's not part of their standing work group. And I think that they didn't realize how much time and staff time and resources the ground-based noise was going to suck from any other staffing that they have available. So this came to me late last night that they really are not going to be interested in having us be an ad hoc. But they are willing to support us in a, in part of, as a separate part of their technical working group. So it's something that I did talk to the City of Pacifica about, the mayor, or maybe he's not the mayor, Mike O'Neill. He's willing to be sort of the chair of the group or the spearhead on that. But I'm not sure. But I'm not sure, he hasn't gotten this news that there's not going to be an ad hoc. Because that happened after the meeting last night.
Is Elizabeth Lewis still the chair? Just curious.
She is the chair, but she wasn't there last night. I attended the Airport Land use meeting, which when we arrived, there was only three people, so it was canceled. So they have a quorum issue. And then later that day, I attended the Local Policymakers Group, which is the Caltrain Business Plan Advisory Group. On that, it's very disappointing what Caltrain is looking for their future business model, even up to year 2040, even though they show us as potentially being one of the highest increase in population and potential users. They still have us almost with no stops and no services under all three of their potential business models as either being skip stopped and/or very limited, very poorly utilized station. And so I'm not quite sure how we can get on their map, but they are looking at the potential population and ridership for the area. And while ours has potentially quadrupled, our stops are not. We will still be at the minimum stops on the Caltrain line. So it's a problem that we'll have to see how that can be resolved.
So just to add to that, they actually did call staff, I don't know, probably about a month or so ago. And so we do have a meeting with them coming up in later in April. And they wanted to get more information about the Baylands development. So I'll report back to you after we've met with them.
Is this the TA, Clay?
It's the, actually, the Caltrain staff.
What's interesting is Caltrain is using the planned Bay Area numbers is what they're using for their projections. So when they show growth at particular stations, it's all based on planned Bay Area, which, as we know, was sort of a number snatched out of the ether and put what could be possible in different cities and different scenarios. So they're really looking at, from what I see, their business plan is low growth, high growth, and really high growth. An amount of infrastructure that'd be necessary to achieve those growth and ridership numbers. And it's, as an advisory committee, there's a lot of information, but not a whole lot of substance in all the different scenarios.
Okay.
And I think those were all the meetings that I've had.
Okay. So I had a Complete Streets and Safety Committee Liaison Meeting with Councilmember Conway. We discussed their 2019 work plan. Just got feedback from them about what they're doing, what they're interested in doing. And they were a really great group to work with, super excited. They're really engaged. They told us all about this study that they did out at San Bruno and Bay Shore. And they borrowed a speed gun from the police department and they were tracking how fast all the cars were going. And they reported back that many of them are going more than five miles over the speed limit. And so they were trying to come up with ideas of how we can make that sort of intersection safer. And, you know, the biggest thing that they want is a stoplight there. So we talked about what is the feasibility of that? How can we get that? And we talked about how there's this problem with people making U-turns, both in the northbound and the southbound direction, which the, and they documented all like the near crashes that they saw while they were doing this. The very next day, I saw a, someone making a U-turn going in the northbound and then to the southbound direction. And the person behind them didn't realize they were making a U-turn, so almost hit them. They didn't realize they were going to turn like right in front of them. So anyway, I saw a very close accident, just what they were describing the very next day. So anyway, they have a lot of innovative ideas of other issues going on around town. So I can't wait to see the work that they come up with. I also had an Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting with Councilmember Lance. And we discussed the city's first time, or Housing Authority's first time home buyers program and how it's, the restrictions that it imposes has really narrowed the pool of applicants that we've gotten and really made it difficult for these applicants to even qualify based on our standards. And so we talked about ways that we could make the program a little bit more accessible to people and which sort of restrictions we should amend. So we're going to bring that back on May 2nd for review. Then some other items I have here is I actually went on a couple of tours of Brisbane businesses recently. I visited a business called Yertle, which is kind of similar to the RealReal, but they're more white labels, so they work directly with Anne Klein, Patagonia, and REI. So basically, let's say you want to exchange an old Patagonia jacket and they give you like a store credit. They don't have a mechanism to do anything with that Patagonia jacket you turn in. And so Yertle comes in and makes sort of a marketplace, an ability for Patagonia to then resell that jacket that's either been returned or that's been just worn out and turned in with part of their recycling program. So they're a really innovative, super cool business. They're a certified B corporation and they're really rethinking how we recycle clothing. And so I thought it would be a great opportunity for the Economic Development Subcommittee to take a tour and see what they're doing. And they're totally open to doing that. So if you guys are interested, I'm happy to help facilitate arranging that type of tour. Another business I met with yesterday is Hensley Event Resources. So they donated a lot of items to Lunafest and they invited me to come and take a look at their warehouse. It is epic, unlike anything I ever expected. They highly specialize in tents, tenting, that's like their main thing that they do. But they have everything from glassware to linens. They have these huge commercial washing machines and dishwashers and the way that they press, like huge irons to press all these linens. So that was like a really cool place to be in and such a gem to Brisbane. And they are, they told me, they know everyone who's in Brisbane. They're like, yeah, there's a florist over here working out of this warehouse. They know all these other event people that work in Brisbane, which I had no idea that we even had a florist. So I'd love also to facilitate a trip there if you guys are interested. And then last but not least, the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce will be recognizing the retirement of Mitch Bull as CEO of the Chamber, which will be on April 17th. I know you guys have a tour that day, so I'm hoping your tour will wrap up in time to come. It's going to be 5:00 to 7:00 at the Brisbane Yacht Club. And I hope you will all join me in celebrating Mitch's many years of service. And that's it for me.
You already explained the one that we had with the Complete Streets. And I was really impressed with their report. I just wanted to say that, that they did a very extensive study. And, you know, we had to cut them short to get through it.
They were very excited.
But it was very methodical and very well done, so.
All right. Well, first of all, I just want to thank Councilmember O'Connell for lifting it down to Redwood City on my behalf to advocate for me to be on the, what originally was the CASA Compact Task Force. So myself and Mayor Donna Colson from Burlingame were the two appointees. Since that vote, the task force name has been changed. And now it's a Housing Bill Task Force. So the CASA Compact, which came out of MTC A-Bag, you know, I kind of think of it as a, as this, I don't know, like this really bizarre flower that now has sprouted these seeds. And if you go to the MTC website, they talk about how the CASA Compact has been the cornerstone for many housing bills that are currently in committee in Sacramento. And so that's why we've changed the scope, instead of doing the CASA Compact, which has kind of already done its thing. You know, now we're looking at, okay, how do we provide some influence on these bills that are currently in committee? And so myself, Don Horsley, who's the other rep, each county.
I thought it's Donna Colson.
So each county, and there's nine counties in MTC. So they have two councilmembers and a county person. So there's three people who represent each county. And so we met a couple of days ago and went through, you know, the various bills and coming up with suggestions and recommendations. And so that draft document I shared with staff. And so I believe it should be finalized still as a draft tomorrow. And we'll send that out to all of the mayors of every city in the county so that they can be abreast of what we'll be doing. The first meeting is tomorrow. It's going to be more of a meet and greet rather than actually saying, hey, you need to do this, you need to do that, because we still need feedback from the cities in the county. Want to thank Madison for attending the CCAG meeting on my behalf when I was...
I have a report for you, but it's written up on my iPad.
No, it's all good.
I'm going to send it to you.
So thank you for doing that. That was the same day as that vote. Let's see. So we had the Home For All recap this afternoon, Madison and myself. And, yeah, it was, it was, it was great to kind of just getting their take on how the community responded to the workshop. And they're going to be compiling the information and getting it to all the councilmembers in the public, you know, fairly soon.
So what was their take?
It was very positive. You know, most people thought it was informative. They, you know, are interested in having greater connectivity. Of course, there were folks that, you know, were unhappy with the way that the workshop was conducted.
Not at our meeting, but that's what we observed.
Yeah.
Like not from our staff meeting felt that way, but it was like individuals of the community felt that way.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean. You know, I'm talking about feedback that was provided. You know, because I mean, you take in the good and the bad, right? And you try and be better. And so, you know, just, you know, wanting to address all the concerns. And that were raised. And so, yeah, yeah, looking forward to them providing some kind of overall direction for how we'll structure the next meeting.
Great. Okay, that brings us to city council meeting schedule. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for April 18th. There's also a proposed meeting cancellation for October 17th due to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, as well as a proposed meeting cancellation for December 5th. And instead, we'll schedule a meeting for December 12th just to make sure that we receive verification of the, or certification of the election results. Anyone opposed to those changes?
No.
No, but you know, actually, I do have a question, though, for Councilmember O'Connell. You know, when we had the, when Doug from SFO came before us, you know, I was asking him those questions about the, how much money does San Francisco make? Right? I mean, we get the brunt of the airplane noise and the pollution and, you know, but we, as far as I know, we don't receive any revenue. And then, you know, you see how SFO is just becoming like the Emerald City. I mean, it's just, you know, it's like...
Rolling in it.
They're rolling in it, right? And yet they can't, they don't have enough money to do, you know, insulation for, you know, these homes that are, you know, when they move the flight paths, now these other homes are in, you know, and they don't, you know, you can't get, you know, replacement windows and doors to...
They've actually, they actually did a report out on that and I'll interrupt you.
Okay.
Because originally, they said that the 2 million that they had put aside for retrofit and second chance home insulation would do about 30 homes in this year. And they've started the program and done some initial assessments. They now think it's going to do, I want to say, 140 homes in this year. But it doesn't put anybody who isn't in their 65 dB constant noise profile, which, you know, is the big...
We're not in that.
Flying Jesus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're not in that. So it is very limited in scope on who qualifies. And you have to really be bombarded to, for them to feel that you are even remotely put out by airplane noise.
Well, I think when they originally did it in the 70s, Brisbane didn't participate in it. They opted out.
But we weren't in their 65 dB contour even then.
Well, I think there was a different criteria then, from what I've seen.
Could be. Now it's Title 12, Title, I think it's Title 12 law, that you have to be 65 dB and God help us if we were really in that.
Yeah.
All right. So that brings us to, you're done with that statement, right?
Yeah, no, you know, I just hope that, you know, maybe the SFO Roundtable can, you know, maybe address some of those, you know, revenue streams, right? That are going to San Francisco that, you know, perhaps could go to these cities that are dealing with the impacts.
Okay.
We should just put the planes over San Francisco and be done with it.
All right. So that brings us to written communications. We've had a number of communications from members of the public. Matthew Kent on March 5th and March 15th, Earth Hour 2019 was the subject. Kim Folian, March 2nd and March 13th regarding public communication for the Home For All Workshop. Bobby Carter on March 20th. KB Home. Zoe Wong Van Heren, March 25th, Energy Efficient Home Tour. Anonymous Person sent us articles regarding SB 50, Mesamak Teo, Daily Journal, and Curbed SF. Nick Mason on April 1st, Purchase of Used Electrical/Mechanical Equipment. Any Miller on April 2nd, Resignation from Complete Streets Safety Committee. So that brings us to oral communications, number two. Anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing no hands, that moves us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to close in memory of Michael Harrigan, Mitch Boyer, and Joey LaSous?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.